Ready to go? Okay, um, let's call to order Bedford Township Planning Commission, regular meeting, May 12, 2021 is about 7:01. Um, let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Gavere, can you do a roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Anger?
Here.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mr. Fritz?
Present.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Garverick's here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is everybody a chance to read, review the agenda? Or, uh, any questions, changes, additions, modifications?
If they're done, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Score. Matt Anger supports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes from February 10, 2021, three months ago. Uh, everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting? Any changes?
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Ron Fritz makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Steiner, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Time for public comment, limited to three minutes. Mr. Welling, do we have people in the lobby? Okay. Okay, state your name and address. And go ahead with your comments.
Yeah. I believe that might be, um, Mr. McCormack for the Bridgepoint Church.
Okay, so does he want to wait?
Terry, are you on?
I am.
Okay, this is, this is Terry, um, Warren. She's actually for the public hearing. The other one waiting in the lobby, the 481, the other phone number that's up right now is Terry McCormack, and he actually should be admitted when we talk to Bridgepoint, about Bridgepoint Church.
Okay. Do we have anybody who wants to make a public comment now?
Terry, are you on there for the, your item B?
I am. Yes.
Okay, she's for item B, George. We'll have to have her call back in.
Do you want me to call back in?
Yes, we have, we have one item ahead of you, Terry.
Okay, so just, um, call back like in five minutes, 10 minutes?
Are you watching the meeting? Oh, she must have hung up.
Okay, Mr. Welling, is there anybody else? Want to wait a minute? Okay, well, let's proceed. Um, item A, request for modifications to landscape requirements for stormwater detention ponds in an ag agricultural zoning district for Bridgepoint Church. On parcel 5802-010-053-00, otherwise known as 9875 Lewis Avenue, Temperance, 48182. Jody, do you want to add anything before we get going on this?
Um, if you'd like, I could read over the analysis, so the applicant hears what we've presented. Um, again, it's for Bridgepoint Church, and they are asking a modification to landscape requirements for the stormwater detention ponds located on site. The history of the site is agriculturally zoned, consisting of 14.66 acres, with approximately 1,005 feet of frontage on Lewis Avenue and 462.12 feet of frontage on Erie Road, and it's the site of the, it is the site of a March 2017 fire, which destroyed and demoed the Bridgepoint Church, that was constructed in 1969. As well, there is an existing ball field that was installed around 1970 and has continued to be utilized and has been recently renovated to increase fence height for safety purposes, including the addition of dugouts and the erection of a scoreboard. On May 22, 2019, Bedford Township Planning Commission granted site plan approval for the Bridgepoint Church, and I included those minutes. Approval for fencing, screening, buffering, and landscaping was at that time as follows. Fencing, screening, buffering, and landscaping. The dumpster location has been identified on the northeast corner of the existing parking lot, and it's being screened by pine trees. At this time, no foundation screening or street landscaping is being proposed and is not required by ordinance, as the subject site is agriculturally zoned. Landscaping is, however, proposed around the detention basins, where the visible from Erie Road and Lewis Avenue are required by ordinance. As permitted by Section 4190712, clustering plantings as proposed are permitted rather than spacing around the entire bank. During construction, several site modifications have been required on the site to accommodate installation of public water lines, gas lines, railroad easements, et cetera. Due to all the changes, the applicant reached out to the planning and building departments to discuss other options of landscaping requirements, as those modifications to the site were encroaching in the required detention pond landscaping. The applicant is requesting a modification from landscape requirements from Section 41907, number 12, stormwater detention ponds. There are two stormwater detention ponds on site located on Erie Road and Lewis Avenue, as previously mentioned, and at the time of the approval, submitted landscaping plan complied by ordinance. The planning and building departments have had lengthy discussions and several meetings in regards to the landscape requirements with the applicant. The applicant has submitted a new proposed landscaping rendering, which has been reviewed and agreed upon with the planning and building departments, subject to review and a decision from the Planning Commission to modify from the required stormwater detention pond landscape to increase the entire site foundation landscaping. I did enclose both renderings for you and kind of highlighted the area. Um, you'll see one side of the plan says May 22, 2019. That was the plan that was approved, and you can see the landscaping is primarily around the detention ponds. Um, the pine trees on the west side of the ball field, that dumpster location has been removed behind the building, which we discussed with Bridgepoint Church to accommodate the fact they were just going to put pine trees. We wanted the dumpster screened more from, um, actually the ball field and Erie Road. Um, they did maintain and include landscaping around the playground area. And if you look at the now proposed site plan that they're looking for, I've kind of highlighted some of the wa, the lines where you can see they're coming around. Um, should they ever have to dig anything up, they would be digging up those plantings around the detention pond. And then the pink highlighted area, lightly purple, is all the new proposed. And then we did discuss with them, they have no ground landscaping around their sign on Erie and Lewis Avenue. Um, we did request they are required to put landscaping around the monument sign. Um, so I believe, uh, Mr. McCormack is the representative, and he is on the line for any further questions.
Okay, Ms. Welling, can you put him through?
I'm on.
Okay, good. Anybody have a question? For the representative?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Um, just, uh, I'll ask a quick question here for either the applicant or, or Jody. Um, so when we're looking at the original plan versus the new plan, um, the old plan, I see a lot of yellow. Um, are, are those plantings actually going to be removed? And the, the new on, the new plan take place of those plantings? Is that what, what we're actually looking at, Jody?
The, the yellow is actually, was only installed by required. The, um, plantings around the dumpster on the north side, the plantings in front of the playground. Um, they were proposing two in front of the, um, turnaround that the fire department required. And then the yellows around the detention ponds were the areas that were required by ordinance. Where the hash marks are, are actually where they actually had to shift things on site, and they did not know that, because when the, they were working on the site, they had not yet had the water lines ran from the railroad tracks down for public water. So at that point, they were unaware of exactly where all those easements are. And I'm sure Mr. McCormack could speak a little bit more on the changes, um, that were actually done for the building location. The ponds were, I think, moved slightly. And then on the, um, west side of the property, they have an additional easement from the railroad, I believe that was, um, increased as well. So the yellow to say is exactly what was proposed the first time, around the detention ponds and those few spots that were, um, shown. The purple now is the foundation landscaping that they're proposing now to install. It is not required by ordinance, so they're looking for a modification. So they're looking to increase foundation landscaping and do away with the detention stormwater landscaping. And Terry, if you have anything to add, please do so.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, Jody, we, with the complications of the shifting and the changes, uh, it became, uh, complicated for us. So what we, working with Jody and the group, we, uh, wanted to make that modification, but when you look at the new plot, even though we're going beyond what's required, uh, in working with Jody, we have about twice as many deciduous trees, uh, planned. We have foundation plantings and beds all around the church. We're actually adding architectural mounding around the church to be more aesthetically pleasing to Erie and, more importantly, Lewis Avenue. We also have plantings in the front of the church as a, uh, which weren't, which, which were not on the original, which, original plan. Uh, we have trees now where the, the second site could be if we built something. Uh, that would, uh, we don't anticipate that for some time. We've added two trees at the mouth of the entrance into Lewis, uh, off of, I'm sorry, off of Erie, onto the parking lot that Jody wanted. Uh, we've screened the, uh, playground accordingly. There's an old sign, Bridgepoint sign, that quite frankly is an eyesore, and we want to take that down, which doesn't require a, a vote necessarily, but we wanted to, we're just doing the best we can to, uh, make the church as presentable as, uh, possible for the neighborhood and the people to drive by. And we felt that that accommodation, as relates to the two retention ponds with what we're doing, uh, would, would work handsomely for this project.
When would you start this, Mr. McCormack?
Well, uh, it's, it has begun. The, the mounding is, is started, uh, is started. Uh, all of the plantings have been ordered, uh, and it's underway. Uh, obviously, we deal with water and rain and, and, uh, worker schedules, but our goal is to have this done, uh, somewhere in the middle of part, I, I forget, Jody, I don't have my timetable with me. I provided it to you. If I, if I recall, it was, uh, mid to late June that the whole thing would be done, including the lawn irrigation from a well. That's all being done.
And the sign too, right?
The, the old brick sign will be taken down. The new sign, as Jody mentioned, will make sure that we have plantings around that. We didn't in our, and we did not in our beginning, uh, draft, but when Jody indicated to me what was needed, we, we made sure that it's available.
Okay. Jody?
I just wanted to add that, keep in mind that the foundation landscaping is not required. So the, them moving forward with it before you make a decision and determination is absolutely, um, permitted for them to do so. Because it's not required, they can add landscaping anywhere on the site they would like to. They're just trying to work, so I didn't want that to be confusing of him saying that they've already ordered the plantings before you made a decision.
Mr. Anger?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry it came through that way.
Um, I just wanted to say that I like the idea of the deciduous trees kind of spread up over the whole, uh, uh, area as opposed to just around the ponds. I think it'll help break up the large, uh, structure and will be more aesthetically pleasing overall.
Yeah, what they've done with that ballpark is awesome.
Yeah.
Looks semi-pro. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. McCormack, short. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna comment, this is Ron Fritz.
Hey, Ron.
I was gonna comment that also I like the way they did it, and if they had a problem with either the tensions, the water lines, or something like that, they don't have to dig up the trees that they just planted. So I think it's a smart move to change it and modify it.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Questions? Mr. McCormack, this is the part where I ask you if you want us to proceed with a vote, knowing that we're one board member short. Um, you can wait until we have a sixth board member, or you can allow us to take a vote tonight. It's up to you.
I would like for you to proceed with the vote, please.
Okay. Is there a, a motion on this item, item A?
I'm willing to make a motion. I just want to make sure I'm making, um, I don't see exactly what, um, is just to approve the new rendition, um, and not have required a, um, landscape around the detention ponds?
It's pretty much just a remodel of, a modification of their original plan.
Okay, I will make a motion, um, that we, uh, allow the modifications to landscape requirements for stormwater detention ponds, uh, for Bridgepoint Church on parcel number 5802-010-05300, otherwise known as 9875 Lewis Avenue, to allow the, um, relaxed, uh, landscaping around the detention ponds and, um, go with the new, um, landscaping proposal.
Second. Ron Fritz, seconds. Um, Mr. Gavere, can you call the roll?
Uh, Marty, or Mark, Mr. Kemprith, let me get his hand raised.
Oh, hi, Mr. Kemprith.
I would suggest that you also include your findings and determination that topographical features or other unique features of the site create conditions that the strict application of the landscape regulations will result in less effective design, uh, and practical, um, design of it. That was the finding, that's your reason for being able to vary the, uh, strict application.
Thank you, Marty. I, um,
Add that to the, uh, motion?
I think the way he said it is perfect, so if we could, uh, just, uh, add that to the motion from what Marty just said.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fritz, do you still support?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gavere, call the roll.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Mahoney?
Aye.
Garverick's aye. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Anger?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to nothing. Item B. Um, open the public hearing requiring the request from Smile Properties LLC, Teresa Warren, for rezoning request of parcel number 5802-028-011-00, from PBO Professional Business Office to R2A, single-family residential located on the west side of Jackman Road, south of Dean Road, Temperance, Michigan, 48182, otherwise known as 8153 Jackman Road, Temperance, Michigan. Is this where we, um, vote, move to do an open hearing?
Yes, I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Support?
I'll support.
Support.
Matt Anger supports. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Well, that's good news.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Go ahead with your name and your address, just for, uh, official purposes.
Um, Teresa, um, Warren, and it's spelled W-A-R-R-E-N. I noticed it was misspelled on this. Um, 7356 Country Commons Lane, Pennsylvania, Ohio, 43560.
Okay. You have something to say?
Um, I do. So we purchased this, um, property, um, actually, we were looking for, um, a property to put our dental office in, when we could not purchase the practice, or pu, purchase the building that we're renting from. And, um, and this building became an option. So, um, we had it rezoned in two, I think it was 2017, 18. And, um, approximately, I don't know, four months later, our building, um, did become available for purchase. And it just made sense for us to go ahead and stay where we were, since we've been there for 50 years, or the, it's been a dental practice for 50 years. So and since then, you know, we started the demo process immediately after purchase. And, um, in that demo process, you know, we gave away everything that was inside the house, you know, the kitchen, the bathroom, all that stuff, the flooring. So we have been putting the stuff back into the house and, um, have been trying to get it rezoned for the last year. But our banker told us that we had to have a kitchen before we could, um, do anything bank-wise, and then, um, we were under the impression that we couldn't move forward with anything, um, building-wise. We just found out until we rezone it, so. Um, so we're in this demo process still, so I'm looking to rezone it so that we can live here. Ask me anything.
Okay, Jody, do you have something to say?
I just didn't know if you wanted me to review the analysis before. Hi, Terry.
Why don't we have you do that? I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's okay. That's okay. You can talk to the applicant. That's fine. So again, the applicant is Smile Properties, Mark and Teresa Warren, and I apologize for the misspelling. I think it's in the system that way. And that, just so that the board members know. It is currently zoned, PBO Professional Business Office. She's seeking R2A single-family, 5802-028-01100, and approximately two acres. The subject parcel was once R2A single-family residential. On an October 3, 2017, this parcel was rezoned at the previous owner's request to PBO Professional Business Office to market the sale of the site for the dental office for the now owners. The applicant originally intended to remodel the existing structure and move their dental office on the subject site. However, they now have since purchased the existing dental office within Bedford Township and are seeking to rezone back to R2A and intend to remodel and live in the home. The request is to rezone from PBO Professional Business Office to R2A single-family. The subject site has approximately 600, 264 feet of frontage on Jackman Road and two acres with an existing dwelling and accessory structure. Their surrounding zonings are north, PBO Professional Business, south and west, R2A Single Family Residential, east, RM1 Multi-Family. The master plan designates this site as suburban residential, and the intent is to accommodate neighborhood development and housing for people seeking suburban-style amenities found in modern construction, such as two and increasingly three-car attached garage, larger setbacks for landscaped yards, decks, play equipment, and private swimming pools. The planning department requested a review of the rezoning requests to be conducted by Lucy Fortin, the Managing Smith Group and Planner for Bedford Township. Ms. Fortin prepared an overall review of the subject area and concluded the proposed zoning and use is consistent with the goals and policies and future land use of the MAPS master plan. In conclusion, it was suggested the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Township Board to approve the rezoning requests for the following key reasons. The subject property is currently occupied by a residential building. A suburban density residential land use is consistent with the Township master plan. And the subject property is located in an area of predominantly residential land uses. And speaking into what the, um, applicant stated, um, when she was remodeling, they did come in for a building permit, and that is how they determined to continue with the building permit. The site is commercially zoned, so they would require a site plan approval through the building department, instead of just a residential submittal for, um, remodeling. That's all?
Is there anything to add?
Nope, I think that, I, I think that was perfect.
Are the driveways connected at all?
The driveway?
Yeah, for the professional building in the home.
There's just one driveway.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, there's just one driveway. The other building is on a separate piece of property with its own driveway. Although they want this property so that they can have this, um, they would need a parking lot, they said.
Okay.
One driveway.
I'm sorry, uh, repeat that. Um, yeah, Mr. Gavere, do you have a, a question first?
No, I can, I can wait.
Okay.
Go ahead, put them on.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Hello?
Hello, this is JR.
All right, go ahead and say your name and address, and, uh, you can say, yeah.
I'm sorry, he's, that's JR Hoppengens. He's actually for the sign request, the next item on the agenda.
Oh. Well, then, uh, would you mind calling back in, what, two minutes, three minutes?
I'll call back. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Gavere, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, switching this back. Um, it kind of sounds like the, the dental practice has been there. They didn't want to sell when they, uh, when they were serious about moving. It was a, oops, we'll sell. That's just my opinion. But, um, I think, I think it's great, uh, it's going down in zoning, so I think it's just a perfect fit there, and it helps the people out, so I have no issue at all with it.
Mr. Anger?
Um, if, do we want to close the public hearing, um, if there's no more calls?
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Any support?
Support.
Second it? Second it?
All right, Mr. Fritz, seconds. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously. Okay, um, do we have a motion? Uh, I want to first say, uh, Ms. Warren, we're short one board member tonight. Would you like us to take a vote tonight, or you have the right to wait until we have a full board?
Um, I don't know that this will be a, I mean, I can't imagine that this isn't going to be unanimous. And, um, so you guys tell me what I should do. So it sounds like it was going to be a great idea. I think Lucy thought it was going to be a good idea. So I'm just following the rules. You tell me.
Yeah, well, it's, it's just your option, you know, i- if you feel like it's not going your way, I guess you could wait until we have a sixth member.
Um, nope, I, I think we're okay, because I don't know why it wouldn't make sense. So you guys go ahead and, um, I guess I just have to take my chances. I'm not sure what to say.
Feel like this is a game show, but it isn't. Anyway, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the request to return to R2A.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Steiner, seconds. Mr. Gavere, can you take the roll? Yes.
Hold on one moment. Jody's got to get in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jody.
That's okay. Um, you may want to include your reasonings, supported maybe by what Mrs. Fortin said.
Yes, I want for parcel 5802-028-011-00. Um, all the, the reasonings supplied to us to return to R2A, uh, I'm in favor of.
Second. All right, Mr. Stevens, seconds, so, um, now we're ready for a vote.
Um, Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Anger?
Yes.
Gaverek's yes. Um, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Um, item C. Request for a sign waiver on a multi-unit building in.
I think she's speaking.
I'm sorry.
Do you guys need me to stay on or should I sign?
Oh, no, 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 you can go.
Okay, and then do I?
Pardon?
She got off.
Okay.
Was, I got a question, was that five to oh or six to oh?
Five, zero. We're short a member.
Six. Six members.
Six, three, Anger, Steiner, Helm, Gaverek, who am I missing?
Ron, Fritz.
He was the first one I said. Fritz, Anger, Stei- oh, me.
Yourself. And if I could just, I'm, I'm sorry, Terry hung up, but I wanted to remind her that this is a recommendation to the Township Board and that it won't be on until the first meeting in June, but I will reach out to her if she is still watching.
Yeah, I might wanna make a note that I said that the last vote we took was six to nothing, but it was seven to zero. Try not to forget myself, okay. So, back item C, um, request for a sign waiver on a multi-unit building in a C-one logo commercial zoning district for Quail Meadows LLC, Pianta LLC on parcel number five eight zero two dash zero three one dash zero nine zero dash zero seven, otherwise known as sixty-six fifty Summerlin Lakes Road, Lambertville, four eight one eight four, uh, four four. Um, is somebody calling in on behalf of this request?
Hello, this is JR from Fast Signs, if you can hear me.
Yes, JR, go ahead and state your name and uh address and then you can say what you need to say.
Uh, my name, my formal name is John Hoppengens, I go by JR. Business address is thirteen thirty-nine North Telegraph in Monroe. And uh, we have been hired by Pianta Law to install a sign uh at the said location. And um, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about that request.
Okay, Jody, go ahead.
Did you want me to read the analysis for the public?
Yeah, go ahead, yep.
The applicant is seeking to install a fifteen-point-four square foot wall sign, two and a half feet overall height in a C-one commercial zoning district on a newly constructed multi-unit building. Per section four hundred point nineteen twenty-two, seven B, one wall sign for each unit located on the parcel is permitted two and a half feet in height and fifty square feet in area or eighty percent of the width of the unit, whichever is less. The subject unit is fourteen feet wide and eighty percent of the width of the unit is eleven-point-two feet. Therefore, the proposed sign requires a four-point-two square foot area sign. The applicant informed the planning department, the proposed sign will utilize the entire space over the existing two entrances on the southeastern end of the building. A letter of approval for this unit to utilize the entire space has been submitted by the owner. The applicant indicated the intent is that the southernmost unit, which is currently a proposed coffee shop, will not utilize the southeastern entrance as its main entrance. The proposed use for the southern portion of the structure will instead utilize an entrance located on the south side of the building. Should any other units submit for a wall sign, the proposed signage would have to be submitted in the planning department, be reviewed and meet the ordinance requirements, or a new submittal for a sign waiver would be required. Should the request be considered, the following waivers are required. A four-point-two square foot area wall, area waiver for a wall sign and to allow one unit to utilize the entire space of the southeastern entrance where two wall signs for each unit would be permitted. And the following should be considered to inclusion and any motion to approve, all required permits shall be obtained from Bedford Township.
Hey, anybody have any questions?
Uh, this is Ron.
Yeah, Ron.
It's gonna look real, I think it's gonna look real, real nice up there. And because there's only one, it's not gonna be as busy. So, just looking over the property, I think that it looks nice and it matches what Dr. Lehman did on his side. A little bit different in style, but it's about, it, it, it looks like it'd be, I've been bred for it, good. Even though it's a little bit bigger, I, I think that's appropriate for that, that uh angle of the pot there. And Dr. Lehman, he even supported it with uh another business would not go into that. Even though there's two doors there, when I looked at it, I was concerned about the two doors, but it, it, the letter that he put in that there'll only be one office there, that'll be the law office. And that'll only be the only sign that would be up there.
Mr. Gaverek?
Yeah, I uh, I think it looks, looks nicer and it's not overbearing and uh I have no issues with it at all.
Mr. Anger?
I just, uh, first of all, I do like the, the look of it, I think it's a good design and it looks well with the thing. But I was just curious, are they technically allowed two signs of fifty square feet and eleven-point-two feet? But they only want one that's, or what is, or is it smaller if you have two?
It's only permitted eighty percent of the width of their unit, each one would. So, she would only be permitted, the size of her unit is actually only the fourteen feet. And so, she would only be permitted eighty percent whichever, or fifty square feet, whichever is less. So, that's why she's requesting the larger because she's only permitted eighty percent of the width of that unit that she's in.
Right, so technically, they could have two signs, almost that size.
And that's why she's requesting, that's why she's requesting just her size, her one sign instead of two.
This will look better than that anyways, yeah.
What will happen at that um south end of the building? Jody, w- would the, there be a decapo sign at the end of the building or will be on the front? What do you think will happen there?
I believe decapo, per working with Dr. Lehman, is working on their sign to be on that south side of the structure. And that they are permitted another sign on that side because they have two front yards. So, they would be permitted a square foot signage on that side of the building as well.
Okay.
But should they want anything else, that sign would have to come back for a sign waiver as well.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll add too, it, it's pretty straightforward. Um, again, the sign is, is gonna be very aesthetically pleasing on the front of that building. Uh, honestly, I think two signs would look too busy in that spot. I think one sign is actually probably the best option there. Especially since it's only gonna be one, one business utilizing that whole frontage anyway. So, again, you could put two signs there, we're taking it to one and we're only using a portion technically of what could be used with two signs. So, four-point-two feet is not, not a huge uh waiver.
Yeah, I don't think it looks intrusive at all, that size, that area. Anybody else?
I would make a motion.
Well, um, Mr. Hoppengens, are you um okay with us taking a vote tonight? Or would you rather wait till we have a full board?
Uh, yes, we would like to proceed.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'll make the motion, Ron Fritz.
All right, Ron Fritz moves. Uh, do you wanna read a motion or what, how do you wanna?
I'll read what I got here and I just, I, I make the motion for the following waivers are uh, a four-point-two square foot area waiver for the wall sign to allow one unit to utilize entire space in the southeast entrance where the two wall signs, one for each unit would be permitted. And that, and then all permits would have to be attained from Bedford Township. And also, we might wanna put in there that uh the, the letter that Dr. Lehman sent, that that would only be used for one space over the double door.
I'll, I'll second with a friendly amendment. Um, Ron, if, same as usual, if we could get the parcel number information added to the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that wasn't on there, I, I see it now. Let me read it to you.
Yeah, read it out.
Parcel number five, parcel number five eight oh two dash oh thirty-one dash oh nine zero dash oh seven.
Except.
Okay, so, Mr. Steiner, you seconded?
Yes, I accept, I accepted the amendment.
Okay. Um, Mr. Gaverek, do you wanna take the roll?
Mr. Anger?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Gaverek's yes. Um, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
I have a question before we leave this.
Sure.
Uh, through the chair to Jody. Jody?
Yes, yes.
Uh, will, will uh the handicap spaces and the curb cut be revisited where they move the front door change to the, the coffee shop on that side? That, nothing's cut there. Uh, to get a handicap wheelchair, you'd have to go all the way down to the middle, back up in front of the sign that we just approved, and then around the corner and go in that way. So, I didn't know if we could, I just wanna make a mention, if that has to be looked at because of the entrance change.
That is a building code issue and I'm not sure of the requirements for the barrier-free requirements that would be handled through the building department. But I can definitely speak, yep, I can definitely speak to Dennis Kohler on that.
Just so if it comes back, it, it's a complete package including that, if, if it needs to be. Thank you.
Um, Jody, can you, can you still hear me? This is JR.
Yes.
Um, just as a point of clarification, decapo plans to use that door as a, a side entrance or a employee entrance. Uh, the idea is to market all traffic and uh, and retail through the, through the south entrance. So, uh, by code, this door needs to remain there and it needs to be unlocked during business hours, I believe. If that helps anybody's understanding.
Yes, and I believe Ron was just asking for the um barrier-free ramp being relocated, should they have to use that other location. But that's not handled just because there's a sign waiver that um, that's actually with site development. Yep, mhm.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, but I figure, yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, JR.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night. Okay, on to item D, discussion regarding ordinance language to allow chicken keeping in residentially zoned districts. And Jody, I'll let you read through this, but I wanna commend you for putting it in such a concise format.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually just going to basic touch base on it. Um, you'll see on the first page that this is our second discussion on ordinance for the permitting chickens in a residential zoning district. Highlighted in red are items that were discussed. I did not re-put in the minutes because it was the minutes that were approved from February tenth, so you had the copy of the minutes already. Um, so, um, we highlighted the area in red of items that were discussed, but no actually decision made on. Um, and then page two, we kinda broke it down as how it would be added into the ordinance language. It would become um four hundred point four oh one principal uses permitted, number eight. And discussions, then we're um in the meeting of an application permitting process. Um, after the meeting, I did speak with the ordinance department and I did speak with the building official. And um, should the commission desire to go through a permitting process to show where the setbacks are for a coop, um, meeting the fencing, the height requirements, determination of where that would be located, um, the building department and the ordinance department and myself, um, signing off on it with the homeowner, determining of maybe how many chickens would be permitted, to make sure they could submit it a plot plan showing all the requirements. So, the, that is just an example of a permit that um we made up in the planning department for your review, should you desire for permitting process.
Does anybody had any other thoughts since our last discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Anger.
Um, I'm the one that mentioned the half acre being the minimum uh requirement. And I did some looking around to see what half acre looked like. And it is a, it's not a, it's not far off. I don't think it needs to be necessarily that big. Um, but I don't think it should be much smaller than that either. Uh, just as a, where I'm thinking that's, uh, if, if we decided to go a little bit smaller, I think it would be very doable because a half acre is a pretty large-sized lot. But um, that's something that we might want anyways, so just as a, throw in my two cents in that part. And I also like the ten feet for any chicken coops away from the setbacks. Um, I think that's um enough. When I am around my chicken coop, ten feet, you, I couldn't smell the chicken coop at all at ten feet.
Mr. Gaverek?
I got a question for Marty there. Um, Marty, if, if, if we um come up with a, a ruling and stuff and it's so big, but if there's subdivisions, do they supersede? Like if it was a, a big lot subdivision, can they put something in their own? So, it's not um, like if there was half acre, I know off of Temperance Road, there's some pretty big lots. Um, can, can they, does the township have the jurisdiction over that? Or can they actually, a subdivision have their own rights and say, we don't want them?
The uh subdivision, either deed restrictions or, or association rules, uh, they would all have uh priority over the township. So, uh, even though there may be a one-acre subdivision lot, uh, and chickens would be allowed by township ordinance, if the deed restrictions or other regulations associated with that parcel uh said no chickens, then there could be, not be any chickens.
Okay, thank you, I was wondering on that.
Jody?
Um, I just wanted to add, in the portion that we had presented showing the language of the ordinance, um, there L, we did put in a little bit of the language that was discussed um regarding, I think it was in the um Toledo, Ohio ordinance of Lucas County. So, we can, that can be worked with our legal counsel on the actual language. But we did put that portion in there regarding um deed restrictions. Um, it says, notwithstanding the issuance of a permit by the township, private restrictions on the use of the property shall remain enforceable and take precedence over a permit. Private restrictions include but are not limited to the deed restrictions, condominium and master deed restrictions, neighborhood association bylaws and covenant deeds. A permit issued to a person whose property is subject to private restrictions that prohibit the keep, keeping of kitchen, chickens is void. The interpretation enforcement of private restriction is the sole responsibility of the private parties involved. So, that would actually be the development or the subdivision and not the township. So, I just wanted to point that out that we, we did look at that as well, Joe, so that is a good um input on that.
Did you say no chickens or kitchens?
Chickens.
Okay.
The second time.
Yeah, I, I just keep going back to the original reason why this even came up and it was just our ordinance officer having a hard time enforcing an ordinance that wasn't clearly spelled out. Um, and I just wanna make sure whatever we, we recommend to the township board, that it's ironclad, that um it's very clear what the repercussions are for somebody who's not in compliance with the ordinance. Um, 'cause I, I just don't wanna create another headache for that department. I'm sure they've got plenty to do.
Well, and Pat, the reason that came up is, you're right, is because um the approach it was taken is, well, if it doesn't say I can't do it, then I can. And that left the gray area. Um, so now we've, we've gotta have something that says you can or you cannot. That's all they're asking for.
Right. And I might suggest too, if we have a permit process, that um we have a list of important things to know before you bring on chickens onto your property. You know, like what they cost to feed, how to take care of them, how long they live, um, how to clean them, you know, certain things that not the common person knows. Um, I don't know if you think that's a good idea or not, if anyone has an idea on that. How would you dispose them, dispose of a chicken that you don't wanna have anymore? Put them in the freezer?
Um, was there? I think, I think Joe takes a lot of chickens in.
Joe, you, you willing to be a, these people can take the chickens they can't take care of anymore?
Um, thanks, but no, thank you.
Joe's the kitchen that Jody was referring to. Um, so, and and it really doesn't have to really pertain to the actual ordinance itself, but Jody, will there be a fee structure for people applying for permits? Or is it just you apply for the permit, you can get it if you pass, or or what?
That will be a decision or a recommendation from the planning commission, should you desire to have a fee to process that.
Mr. Anger?
I figure I'd just go through all the numbers that are laid out and just, uh, give my opinion on all of them, so that way you can kind of know what I'm getting at. I mean, I think number one, um, I think it's exactly what you have written in the red is perfect. Only allow R one through R three unless it, uh, R two is, um, or the two family is, uh, single family developed. Um, the number two, the minimum requirements, I think honestly, point three or point four would be enough, um, but that's not, that's just my opinion. Um, setbacks, I believe ten feet would be enough. Um, I do like the idea of, uh, number four, the, uh, two chickens for every, um, half acre, or even just saying a maximum of six or eight chickens. I think, uh, I just think six chickens is enough, um, for any residential area. Um, no roosters, I agree with. I think there should be a, um, if there's complaints, then there's like a, maybe a, there, there always can be accidents and things happen where they get called out, but there may be a three-strike rule, um, and you lose your permit and then you have to get rid of your chickens type of thing, and then you, there may be a minimum amount of years before you can reapply for a permit, um, based on the third strike. The onsite sales, that doesn't bother me. Do people sell their eggs? I know, so either way for me is fine with that one. Uh, no slaughtering of chickens on the site is, uh, you definitely don't want that. Oh, and then, yeah, we already talked about the three violations, um, and enforcement, like I just said, um, about the losing your permit and having to rear chickens and having to wait either so many years or never allowed to have the chickens if you violate the three-strike rule.
Matt, excuse me, on that number nine, you said that you should or should not have onsite sales.
I don't mind them selling their eggs. Um, I mean, I, I used to take my eggs to work and sell them, and it's just for the kids to sell them, it's kind of fun, but, um, I'm not really for or against it hard one way or another.
Mr. Gaverek?
I'm not, I'm not so, and I'm just thinking out loud here, I'm not so sure that we need to get a permit for this. I think it's up to the homeowner to, if his property is legal to have it, just another process you're coming in and and making more paperwork. If you're not allowed to have it and you do, you know, you, your chickens can be taken away, but I think everybody should say, hey, can I have them? Or can't and do the research first, but I don't know if the ordinance department needs another step in there that I got to come at this time, I got to fill this out, but, but then again, I don't know. You know, what about Joe Blow that bought the chickens and they didn't realize, um, their lot wasn't big enough? Is that shame on them? I'm not so sure we want that process, but, um, on that, it doesn't matter to me either way, but I don't want to put something more paperwork, more this, more that. Um, but I think the ordinance officer, if I got chickens and I'm, I'm not supposed to have them, I think they should be able to come out. And I don't know how that works, Marty. Is that, can they take them away, or does that go to court? How does that work?
Well, it, they're not going to be removing the chickens unless there's a place to, a sanctuary, uh, like yours to take them to. So it's going to be a, uh, ordinance violation, and there'll be a court action, there'll be a civil infraction first. So it, it's merely, uh, ordinance violation process.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I would ask Jody, does Damon have any thoughts on whether the permit process would be beneficial or not?
I believe in our discussions that, um, Dennis Kohler, the building official, myself, and Damon felt that, um, should the permitting process be something the commission desired, it would actually give the ordinance department, um, an opportunity when they went out to someone's location that had chickens that were, did not apply for a permit, that would give them the opportunity to tell them, our ordinance allows them, but you have to have a permit, show where your coop is, um, put a plot plan together, show you meet the setbacks, and then if you're not complying, it gives them something to say, well, we allow it now, but there is a permitting process, so we can make sure you're complying with setbacks, how many chickens, the size of your parcel, depending on what the commission's desire is. I don't think all of us will work either way the commission recommends, whether you want the permitting process or not. It just gives the ordinance department that extra support of the ordinance, whether it's permitted, to show that they're meeting their other requirements, instead of waiting for another complaint or concern to be called to their department.
Jody, did you have something else to say?
Oh, is my hand still up? Sorry.
No, you hit it on before, so maybe you included it.
I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Steiner?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think that the ordinance department is going to be flooded with permits. I don't think that's a major issue, but I, I think that it's probably still a good idea, whether there's a fee structure or not. But one big thing about that is it gives the ordinance an opportunity when they fill out the, the paperwork that they're clearly told and and fully understand, this is what you can and cannot do. Other than that, if somebody says, well, I, I live in the right type of residential zoning district, I
Oh, you went mute. You went mute, Rick.
Well, that did it on its own. Um, but if they don't, you know, if they don't know, um, that there's a specific setback that they need to have, or they think I can have chickens, but they want to put eight, and if the, if the ordinance says six, um, it's just very clear upfront, and then again, if, if they do get called off from ordinance, they go out there, they can take the paper that the people signed off on, said, here's the ordinance, you signed off on it, you agreed to it, so you definitely are in violation, and there's no argument, you know, that, that Damon or or anybody from that department or Sheila has to to go through.
Jody?
Um, I just wanted to add, um, necessarily the permitting process would not have to go through the ordinance department. Um, zoning and setbacks would be handled through the planning and the building departments. So the ordinance, we would just have them review, keep a copy on file for their records. Actually, if they were to get a complaint, they would then have follow-up to say, and check the building department, see if permit was issued, how many chickens, and they would have documentation. But not necessarily the permitting process would have to go through the ordinance department. I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm sorry. Mr. Gaverek?
And I don't have a problem if that makes it simpler and easier, but I guess now are we going to get into, Mr. Kohler goes out and says, well, this chicken coop isn't big enough, and it has to be this and that, I think we're, we're going to open a can of worms with, with, uh, you know, a lot of people have chickens, and is he going to be, um, a coop X by X, ten by ten, and a building permit for it? And I, I, I just don't want that to happen if somebody wants to raise some chickens for their kids, that we're not over-regulating it and saying you need to have this and that. I have no problem with, uh, setbacks off the property lines, no roosters and that, but if somebody wants to have them, um, you know, they don't want to put a at nine dollars a two by four, have a five thousand dollar shed to have these. So is there anything in there that, that they're going to be, the building department's going to be regulating the coops too, or or is that just, you know, one half chickens, this is your setbacks, and put them in the enclosure you want? I guess that's the question.
Okay.
I think a, a plot layout would be enough for the initial permitting, and then if there's a complaint, then they could come out and look and see what, you know, what's the complaint based on, and I mean, there's a, there are recommendations for chickens, and I think it's pretty small, it's like two square feet per chicken or something like that, so it's, you don't need a large for, leave on a chickens we're talking about, I mean, it's twelve square feet for six chickens.
Yeah, I was just, I was, I guess my question was, when they go there, it goes, well, you have to have this. I, I, I hope we don't go that route, you know? The setbacks are fine and the zoning's fine and let the homeowner decide what they want to keep them in, because, you know, most people don't have chickens a long time. I get weekly calls, will you take my chickens and ducks? You know, they get them for Easter. I mean, I think I took in six or eight ducks this week, half grown, and you know, we get them all the time, and we got forty-one acres, we let them free range, and there's a pond, and so, um, as you know, Matt, um, it's cheaper to buy eggs than it is feed chickens.
Yes, it is.
See, it's that kind of information, I, I never knew that, you know, but it, it's something that you go along with that permit. You know, people need to know what they're in for. I mean, I imagine many of them do. I don't want to assume that they don't, but, um, you know, does anybody else have any other feelings about the minimum acreage or size of the lot? Should it be a, anywhere that's residential, R one, two A, two B, R three? Or do you want to start at half an acre, maybe in a year, if it, there aren't any problems, we kind of open it up? Any thoughts on that?
I, I think, uh, what Matt went down through, that, them examples, I think that's good to, to, to use that for the guidelines. I mean, we can talk about half acre, third acre, four, we can talk about that all night long, but there's something in writing here that came from different ordinances that was, that was, uh, investigated and
Well, yeah, well, we, we, we have a list of things that we've kind of narrowed down that have to be narrowed down a little bit more. So that's just where I'm going with my question about that, uh, minimum.
Well, would you want to take them again one at a time, or how would?
But I, I'm just, I'm just going over point two right now.
Okay, so, well, what did we decide about point one?
Well, um, like only R one through R three, single family, you know, with the exception of, um, where there's an association, um, you know, uh, apartment buildings, that sort of thing, have to be exceptions, right?
So would we have to change your wording for number one?
Uh, uh, the, we're still in discussion phase, so I, I just thought I'd bring out point two and start from there.
I recommend me, if we're going to do that, start at one and go right on through them and take care of them.
All right.
But we, I mean, that's fine, when you start at two.
Yeah, are we all right with what's in red? Anybody have any, um, needs to change that?
That's pretty straightforward.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't.
I don't find it controversial or, you know, anything. I think it's, it pretty much covers. So nobody'd want to change that? We'd be good with what we stated here in red?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, down to point two, minimum, uh, half acre lot.
I prefer we stay at point.
Pardon? I'm sorry, Mr. Center.
I, I prefer stay at point five, half acre.
I'm fine with that, too.
I would prefer point four, but, uh, point five is not far from it, so I would be okay with point five as well.
I mean, we could review it in a year or whatever, right?
I mean, I guess people can always get a variance too, I guess, based on if they're really close to the number.
All right. Um, requirements in the setback, anybody have any objection to ten to fifteen feet?
I don't.
So, but it's got to be one or the other. Um, I don't, man, you said, you know, ten feet and you couldn't smell your chickens, but I, I will tell you, if you live on site with the chickens, eventually you don't smell them, period. Um, I remember, no, seriously, I remember years ago, delivering furniture appliances, it went to a property, it was a hog farm, and you know how, how that can be pretty, pretty nasty. We were inside the home for over an hour installing appliances and everything else. When we came out of that house, we forgot all about the smell of the hogs, because your body adapts to it. So, just, you know, just wondering on that, um, I mean, ten feet's pretty close, but
All right, I'm still okay with fifteen too.
Can I take something?
Oh, Ron has something to say first.
Hey, go ahead, Ron.
If we look at article four, what they're saying is the placement, it would be ten feet from the property line and fifteen feet from the main building. So that's why they have ten, I figured that's why they had the ten feet and the fifteen feet that they had on three. See, it's a dwelling, buildings, dwellings, they had on that, yeah, ten feet from property line, I'd say, and fifteen feet from the main building.
Or from a fence, a structure, how do the, you word it?
Well, the fence would be the property line, ten feet from the property line would be a fence, I would imagine.
Jody?
I just wanted to say that when it was discussed, it was discussed regarding, um, the property line and then the, uh, uh, main building or a dwelling, and we have those setbacks as well when you have an accessory building, and I just wanted to let you know what those were. Um, a four hundred, up to a maximum of four hundred square feet, and it's, for an accessory structure requires ten feet from any building, and, um, from the property lines was five feet, and I think we discussed that, and then I think Matt had discussed ten feet from a property line was more beneficial because it was chickens and not just an accessory structure. If that clears anything up.
Yeah, I suppose it could define the area of the lot that would be permitted, right? If you're fifteen feet in from a property line in a building, that's thirty feet right there. Go ahead, Joe.
Hey, Jody is, um, so if somebody has a eight by ten shed in their backyard, in our zoning now, um, everything has to be off a property line?
Yes, I, there is no permitting process up to a two hundred square foot accessory building.
And, and can it, can they be right on the property line, or are they supposed to be back if there's no permitting?
Minimum of five feet.
Okay, okay. What if, what, I'm just trying to, what if there's somebody, it's usually a chicken coop, and it is a pre-existing building, it's on a property line, do they, do they move it? Do that, now do they become, what do you call it, compliant?
Well, chickens are, I'm sorry, chickens aren't permitted in residential right now, so if they have a chicken coop, it would be not in compliance. So, once they, if the desire of the board would be to require a permit, they would have to come in, fill out a permit, and then move the coop to meet the setback requirements, because it would not be permitted at this time.
So s, if somebody built, uh, put a shed close to a property line and, and there was a complaint, would they have to move that? Nothing to do with chickens?
Yes.
Yeah.
If it was, there was a complaint and the ordinance went out and it didn't meet the setbacks, they would confirm that, of course, with Dennis Kohler.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're saying if it was already there and we put this into effect, that they would have to move it? Uh, to me, I asked Marty there, that, that to me would almost have to be grandfathered if they, what if they had a, a permanent structure shed with a, a cement slab and everything?
I, I think she was talking about a chicken coop, right?
Or buildings less than two hundred square feet.
Because a chicken coop would not be permitted in residential at this point, so it would be not grandfathered because they were never permitted in residential, wouldn't it be like a prior legal non-conforming structure before the ordinance? Unless Marty can speak on it.
Okay, so you're definitely talking about a coop, okay.
Um, so, um, fifteen feet, is that the number we're going to use? This is for the, the next discussion. We're whittling this down or funneling it down, right?
Joe made a good point. I think two fifteens is too much.
You think it's too much?
Yeah, I think you're right, Joe, because you go fifteen and fifteen, now you're, you got thirty feet. So I'd be good with ten and ten or ten and fifteen, whichever.
What's the fifteen and fifteen? That is, um,
Well, if you're fifteen feet from a property, if you're fifteen feet from a property line and then from the house, that's thirty quick feet of space taken up, you know, and
It would, it would have to be fifteen feet from the, from the back of the house, and then it'd have to be off the property line at ten feet or fifteen.
Right, so you'd be squeezing it in the middle, basically.
I see what you're saying. I have no problem making the fence line ten and building's fifteen, if that helps, Eddie. Like what, what it says right there.
We can do it that way, Ron. If we go ten feet from the line, fifteen from the house, then the next time we talk about this, we can find it. We can measure our backyards and see what it looks like.
I see what you mean about the thirty feet in the center, yeah.
Okay, um, anything else on the setbacks? All right, how about item four, two chickens for every half acre, maximum six or eight? All right, how about item four, two chickens for every half acre, maximum six or eight. What do you guys think? Should it be max six?
Matt, Matt recommended six, not to put his name out there, but.
I'm good with six, yeah.
I think two for every half and max six.
Matt, are you still good with the six?
The six is a good number, I mean, that's, you get the right chickens, that's half a dozen every day.
All right.
All right, permitting of roosters, I think there should be roosters.
I think there should be only roosters.
Unless you live next door, unless you live next door and they go.
All right, rolling agreement, point five is good. Permitting chickens and any or all subdivisions requirements by acreage, acreage requirement of half acre. Think we agreed on that for right now, right?
Sure, yeah.
All right, um, how.
Pat, does it make sense to say any or all subdivisions? That could be misconstrued.
Um, yeah, it, you know, you make a, a good point there, and we already talked about how you can't already have them probably by. Um, you know, rules of living in a, an association. Like, you probably couldn't do this in Summerland, could you?
No, but now just, how about number six? Um, the six make even sense because we've really covered. The type of property and we've covered in, you know, that's the beginning part, and then we've covered the acreage in point two. So does, do we need number six?
It's almost like reiterating what was in point two, right?
But point one and two.
Go ahead, Jody.
It was just the portion that um, the last meeting, we hadn't determined whether we were going to be specific on subdivisions if they had a half a acre. And then add that language that says that if your deed restrictions say you can't have them, then it would fall back on that. So that's why it just says any or all subdivisions depending on the acreage, but absolutely, we can take that out as a reiterating.
Okay.
And, and if you want, we, I mean, you could put the words up on number one, you could put also subject to uh. Deed restrictions or HOAs.
Yep. Um.
I would say, I would say that the people who's gonna be the final say, not the final say, but like. If Marty gets involved, that they can do what they want to with six, move it to one or, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, the township board has the final say, um, you know, we're, we're doing just a recommendation. Um, point seven, how maintaining noise nuisance odor trespassing waste disposal, feed storage, et cetera, no direction discussed. Um, and it's just like our ordinance system, it's complaint based, right?
Yes.
So, you know, it, it, if a neighbor complains, they're gonna send Officer Cecil out.
Well, and on top, and on top of that, all he can do is write a violation um, from a, a true enforcement. You know, and, and the police department's not gonna do anything, so they'd have to, uh, they'd have to have violations X amount of times, and then at that point. If, if they feel necessary, then ordinance turned over to suggest legal action.
Go ahead, Mr. Camprith.
Well, this, this, this area is where I see ordinance enforcement having a lot of problems. Because every one of these items is, is subjective. We don't have any objective standards saying how much odor, how do you measure the odor? Or waste disposal or feed storage, if they have uncovered feed storage, are we attracting rats and other vermin? So this and noises is always a problem, and what's a nuisance? You know, that's, that's a civil dispute between neighbors. So I don't know how ordinance enforcement uh, feels about enforcing these kinds of things. Unless we're able to identify objective standards that they can compare to the, the existing situation at the site, so. I see that as, as a problem. Uh, I don't know how we'll deal with this.
Mr. Ingraham?
I think you need to put in, in the ordinance, things that would eliminate the majority of the, what the problems that could come up would be. That way, there isn't, you don't penalize for having an, uh, an odor, you put in the restrictions that would eliminate the. Chances of there being odor, so uh, for instance, the setbacks would help with the odor from the yard, the. You could say no disposable waste on the property has to be taken to a facility, um, that would also be the. Just a way of making sure, and that there has to be in, the feed has to be in a um, secure storage thing, that way. Um, it's just black and white.
I like that last point, that's important. Yeah, and basically, I mean, point seven is the, the, you know, contro- controversy surrounding this whole issue. Is uh, you know, if, if there were never gonna be those problems, you wouldn't need a permit or to have a, a ordinance that allows it. You know, that's my, my whole concern with anything uh, that we change is just how will you enforce it?
I do know that like, dogs are noisier most of the time than, than the chickens will ever be at six chickens. Um, you're walking for, down the street and the dog comes up to the fence and barks at you the entire time you walk down the fence, chickens don't even do that, so. This, it will be less intrusive than a lot of things.
I, I agree with you, yeah. J- Joe, go ahead.
Um, I agree with Marty, um. You know, it's really easy to say, put it in a, a tin can for food and so rats and mice, but. You know, how do you do the deal when it's uh. You interpret the smell and some things there, it's gonna be some conflict, uh, neighbors say it smell, it doesn't smell. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna just have some, some issues there on the part that you can't, it's not like a decimal reading if your muffler's too loud. There isn't a few of those things, uh, um, one person thinks, you know, cleaning it. Once a week is fine, somebody else's every other day, you know, so I. I wish this, I wish this deal wasn't even coming up, because we've talked more about this than any issue we've talked about. And it's not that simple, you know, it's not that simple, but Marty's right, you know, you got somebody coming out there and. The first thing they're gonna have the hair on the back of their neck stand up because they're mad because they want to have chickens and, and you're not gonna tell me that, you know. So, I feel sorry for Cecil and them, to be honest.
It's very subjective, that's just no twist about it.
Yeah.
I think we should have it be based on what Jody thinks of the smell. She has to go out to every property.
Sending Jody out.
Chicken McNuggets, Jody.
You mentioned a large dog, I mean, you could have somebody's a dog lover and a chicken hater, and a chicken hater, and like you said, walk down the sidewalk, dog barks for a half hour at you. But you hate the chickens, so you're gonna say, these chickens are loud, too loud for me, it, it, it's just, there's no way to get around it.
Glad, glad that's not my job, you know, that's gonna be tough on Cecil and everybody. Hopefully, there's ten people that want chickens and they don't stand it long because it costs, you know, costs more to do it, you know, um. Than it's worth, but um, wow, wow, wow.
Ron, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Um, point eight kind of goes back to what we were already talking about setbacks, and I guess when you rewrite this, Jody, maybe uh, just make setbacks its own category. You know, for building, for uh, coops, uh, yeah, it's all the same topic. Allow onsite sale of eggs, I agree with no onsite sales and no signage uh, permitted. Um, what do you guys think?
I personally am okay with them selling eggs in their property, I don't know if it's a legal thing, if it's not a legal thing, then that's one thing, but um. If it's not against the law, then I'd have no problem with them selling eggs in their driveway, but.
That, gotta be under a four by eight sheet of plywood, right? The size for sale?
Yeah, I, I just think that.
Fifty square feet, two and a half foot height, and uh.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would generate quite the traffic, uh, you guys have probably heard the story about uh, Gordy Howe, how he's selling memorabilia out of his house. And the neighbors would complain about the non-stop traffic going in and out, buying uh, memorabilia. You know, I, I guess that'd be my concern, just people driving, you know, up to, you know, it's like a retail sales and. Um, and the signs, you know, it's not like they're complying with sign permits like everybody else doing business in the township has to do. But that, that's my concern.
Marty.
Mr. Camprith?
Uh, I would prefer there not be any sales, because I don't want it to turn into what someone might. See as a uh, commercial enterprise or retail sales, and once we get into the commercial. Commercial enterprise is not gonna be an allowed uh, activity in a residential area. Nor do we want to uh, start mixing it up with the Right to Farm Act because it's a commercial enterprise.
And we wouldn't permit um, sale, for sale signs of eggs as a, in a residential district.
That makes sense.
Dr. Lehman and Payetta, they have to get permits for their signs, right across the street, there's a, a big sign selling eggs. They don't have to go through the permitting process, so, you know.
Yeah, I saw that sign last week.
So, a- anybody object to keeping what's in red?
I think it's okay.
It's good, yeah.
All right, uh, point ten, no slaughtering of chickens, we good with that? Unless you're Joe Gavarek.
Unless you're Colonel Sanders.
Or the local coyote.
All right, um, point eleven, should there be a process on violations? How many repercussions, uh, guide for ordinance? Uh, discussion of three violations, but no determination of enforcement. Is that really up to us, or um, is violation of any ordinance a violation of an ordinance, no matter what type of variety is? Go ahead.
I, I, I guess I just have a, a comment and throw it out there, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but uh. And I haven't looked at our zoning ordinance recently with respect to enforcement. I believe it's a civil infraction, first offense, might be a civil infraction, second offense. Uh, and, and maybe a third, I'm not sure, uh, it may escalate. Uh, you could rely upon that, and then if it gets bad enough, then we go to court with a misdemeanor. Uh. Or if you're using the permit process, you could maybe gear it towards. Uh, a number of violations, then they lose their permit without us having to go to court. And do a civil infraction or a misdemeanor. Just some thoughts I had.
And that would be a true violation is determined by ordinance, not just a complaint.
Right, right, it would be a violation of your permit uh, restrictions. Therefore jeopardizing the ability to maintain the permit. Rather than going into the ordinance violation so much uh, in talking about civil infractions and misdemeanors.
Can you um, like, give Jody something to put in writing on that point sometime between now and the next meeting?
Uh, we can.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gavarek?
You know, one of the things that, just with dealing with the zoo, we've uh, we've had the. Uh, dog warden come to us, you know, they don't, they don't want cats, they don't want nothing, it's dogs, and. They ca- they called us in the past and saying, look, we've got an issue here, will you take these animals? We have no place for them, so that, that's really. Um, gonna be a problem, I know the. Game war, or the dog warden's not gonna take chickens, you know, so you're gonna have to, gonna have to look at that, um. It's kind of a wow, 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 another one, because um. I can't believe somebody would hire an attorney and fight it that far, but people get bullheaded and stubborn and. Um.
Cat building the toys.
Yeah, the Cecil is not gonna wanna bring him back to the township and put some chickens in uh, his office, so. That's a Marty deal, I don't know what you do.
Are there any other points that should be added that we haven't talked about?
I think that covers it pretty good, there might be something falling through the cracks, but. If we, are we gonna get that back, uh, pet, and then go over again, or?
Yeah, that's my plan, I'd like, just like to see this refined more and, and we can go over fine ways.
I like the way we went through there and clarified what we liked on that, that was good. To get it to the next step, you know?
Okay. Um, we'll move on to item E, discussion regarding ordinance language. Allow onsite sales and I to light industrial zoning district for composting facility. Jody, do you have something to add here? More clarification, are we talking, should they be allowed to sell stone, bag, mulch?
Um, it was presented to the township board um, by the property owner of the Mulch King to request um, additional onsite sales. Of other than our ordinance allows for items produced on site. When we wrote the ordinance, um, we had looked at other locations and made a determination that um. Retail sales is not permitted in an industrial zoning district. But to allow and avoid the property owner to have to move the product to another site that he was producing on site. That was where we determined to allow items produced on site to be sold from the site they were being developed on. The um, request was to allow for other items such as stone, millings, um. Or the request I have is a decision from the commission to either, are we going to allow specific items of, or other landscape material? Um, I don't know how specific the commission wants to be, um, but that is up for discussion. Um, the discussion um, with the planning department and our legal counsel was to allow rock millings, screening. And other landscape material not produced on site. So, we're looking from direction from the commission members now on. Where you would like to see or request to the township board as a recommendation to move forward with other items on. Composting facility sites.
Okay, Mr. Steiner?
So, first thing, um, a- as Jody said, this was originally brought forward uh, by Mulch King, but. In this scenario, we have to take Mulch King completely out of this, because this, this ordinance. Would not apply just to Mulch King, it would apply to any property of this type, so. Whatever we decide to do, it would have to apply whether it's Mulch King or whether it's uh, Pat Mahoney's service or. You know, Brad Helm's, whatever, that's how we've got to, to do this. Um, and I think we need to be very specific of if we do any of these approvals, stone, millings, screening, et cetera. It needs to be spelled out in those items, and then. When and if we do that, we must clearly state that the property. Has to be one hundred percent in compliance with all laws, regulations, ordinances. Meet all site plans, all site plan approvals, all agency approvals, et cetera, et cetera, that. There can't be a single crack anywhere of any approval process to allow anything to be sold. So, if there's one little thing that's not done, they shouldn't be doing the other things that they're doing, let alone add to it.
Mr. Gavarek?
I have a question.
Um, Mr. Gavarek, could you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I agree exactly what he, he's saying there, as long as it's uh, I mean, Rick hit it right on the head there, I have no, what I was gonna say, so.
Mr. Fritz?
Uh, at the current time, I don't know if they're still doing it, but Hanzel, over on Lewis Avenue, they would bring in bulk mulch. And reading the page we got here, that kind of falls underneath that, they, they've hauled it in and then they sold it, you took it out in truckload or. Or, you know, it's not pre-bagged, it's, it's just a big pile of mulch that they sell. So I see that.
Miss Record.
What do we do for that? Is there a permit for that now at the present time? What are we allowing at the present time for other places?
We're letting Jody talk about that one, his zoning.
Houseels is, Houseels is not a composting facility, this is specifically for facilities developed for composting.
Okay.
And Houseels is not an industrial.
Do they need a, a permit, like at Hanzel's where they pull in a truckload and they dump it, and it just loose mulch?
I believe Houseels, I believe Houseels is a non-conform, a prior legal non-conforming use, and they are permitted for commercial retail sales. And so bringing in product to sell for their landscaping service business is different than a composting facility. That was, yep, that, it's a different use that is permitted on that property. And Marty, if you have any, I'm, sorry, Marty, do you have any other input on that?
Well, I would suggest it's probably not industrially zoned either.
Jody, or, or even Rick, maybe you guys could, could clarify this, a composting facility couldn't sell anything there, right? They make it and they sell it wholesale to a Houseels or somebody like that?
The composting facility can sell what he produces on site, so he can sell his wood chips, his mulch, um. It's just bringing in product to sell such as the stone, rocks, millings. It's just bringing in product to sell such as the stone, rocks, millings. Um, if they wanted to sell landscaping pavers, so that's why the decision needs to be determined how specific or if it just wants to be landscape material, it's in the interpretation of landscape material. Everybody may have a different opinion of it, so that was where the commission needs to make a determination of how we want to write the language, specific or as landscape material.
Mr. Anger.
Um, I would agree with Rick, um, I think, first of all, I think having the stone and stuff like um, that's generally landscaping uh purposes is a nice thing to have uh in one location. Sometimes you want mulch, sometimes you want rocks, sometimes you want both same place, but they also need to be before they're allowed to bring in other stuff, they have to be in uh accordance with the uh their site plan, the way it's supposed to be submitted and everything like that, so they can't be adding sales when they're not even in compliance with what they're supposed to be for the prior hand stuff, so I think uh what Rick said is right on as well.
Rick, can I ask, as a builder, what do you think of a company that only can sell compost? Would you spend time there or would you prefer to go to somebody who can handle more than one type of material as a builder?
Yes, I feel it's okay to have other materials there, but he has to follow and be in compliance with the original agreement that he, you know, site plan and things that were provided. I don't have, have a problem with him selling, I'd rather go somewhere that has stone and pavers while we're doing a project to be able to get it all at one site.
Well, what you're talking about here, correct me if I'm wrong, they're talking about, you know, receiving the things that are gonna, you know, the, the curing and the disposing of waste materials, they're gonna get their and then, then it's gonna do its thing and then become mulch. Is that, because they're talking about composting and all the other stuff on this one letter we have. The monitoring and record keeping, how often they turn it, uh, and all that other stuff, that's like you guys said, that's a lot of that's gotta be, you know, to that trade. I mean, I don't know how you, you figure out the, the temperature and the turning process and when you do this and when you do that.
Go ahead, Jody.
I, I just thought I could maybe give Ron a little bit of clarification. That is the portion of the ordinance that is in existence, that's on the paper. And the highlighted area that says location of onsite commercial sales of product produced onsite from the composting operation. That is the language that exists that only allows what is produced onsite. The request and determination is to allow other than product produced onsite. So, right now in the I um two district with a composting facility with special approval, you can produce items onsite with the material that's brought in and sell it onsite. He is permitted to, the site would be permitted to do that. However, having stone, mulch, or stone, millings, rocks, any other landscape material that would be brought onto the site for retail sales is not permitted at this time. Does that clarify a little better?
Yeah, well, I kept hearing pavers and stuff like that, I didn't see this in this letter, but I, no, yeah, that makes it really clear when you say that. So, right now, they couldn't buy a, a truckload of pavers and sell them, they couldn't buy some uh walking stones and.
That is correct, that would not be permitted at this time.
Jody, you've visited other facilities or is anybody here, I'm, I'm just curious if there's other composting fa- facilities in the area that sell anything other than what they make and how does it work? Yeah.
I, I have not actually visited other facilities, um, however, in working to develop the ordinance for our composting facility, most of the facilities we reviewed only allowed product that was actually produced onsite. Some of the locations had stone and um, but most of them were all mulch, um, wood chips, other types of material that was produced onsite, and that's why we geared towards allowing that to be part of the ordinance.
And I would bet, Jody, that they also were not zoned in industrial either. Most of them are probably in agricultural rural areas.
Yes, agricultural areas.
And can you compost in agricultural areas in Bedford?
With the Right to Farm Act, Marty would have to speak on that, but I believe some agricultural you can allow for composting. But Marty is the one to ask that question too.
Marty doesn't have a good answer for that without research.
I would, I would like to recommend if the, if we, if the ordinance is changed by the board to for bulk material uh like stone, to have it not just a giant hill of stone, that it needs to be in a contained space, kinda like if you go over to any facility that sells the mulch and uh stone, that it's separated by, you know, so it's just not like this giant pile out in the middle of the yard, just as a recommendation.
The neighbors will love that.
Are you guys familiar with the one that, I can't remember the name of, the one that was at the corner of Whiteford and Sterns? You know, they had them all, even though it was parking lot stuff, they had them, I can't remember the name of it.
Boat champs.
Yeah, boat champ, and then also Sandman just down the road, I know it's Whiteford, but Sandman, almost the expressway. They got everything, you know, they have the bag mulch, they have loose mulch, they have stone, they have rock, I, I don't have a problem myself. I'm letting, I thought it was stuff that was uh, you know, fermented or whatever on the property they were talking about. I didn't know this was the existing one, uh, and that's my, my fault, but but I have no problem of them selling stone and block and whatever it takes to make landscaping job. I, I don't see why they should not be able to do that, but maybe there's a reason that I don't know about. What do you guys think?
I'd try to buy in Bedford any chance I get and um I have to go outside of Bedford to get stone, at least when I needed it.
Yeah.
Mazerans.
They sell stone in Bedford?
I, I shouldn't have told you my secret.
I think that's about the only one.
Mr. Camprith?
I guess I would ask you to uh keep in mind the relative zoning districts. I mean, you might find some businesses selling those things, but their, their zoning is probably not right industrial, it's commercial. And that's what commercial zoning is for.
So, that's, that's, that's the key thing, that makes sense. Even this is a light industrial zoning, this one is correct.
Yeah. So, why wouldn't he, why wouldn't uh an owner of, of a property in, in an I two light industrial zoning district changes appeal, apply to change the zoning to agricultural and bypass this, the requirements, go ahead, Jody.
Because we don't allow a composting facility in egg, it is only permitted in the I two district.
So, that's what I thought I, we were asking earlier.
And, and on top of that, as, as somebody said earlier, asking about the I two. Let's just say it was not a composting facility, somebody has a, just a general other type of business in I two. They can't bring in outside goods to sell as retail. So, it, it's not, again, this is where I said, we gotta look at more than just this being a Mulch King. It's not just Mulch King, it's anyone, so an I two property, whether it's Mulch King or whether it's another light industrial, does not permit the, the outside sales, so they've already got one exception that they're allowed to sell retail of what they produce onsite, so that's what, that's what's draw, driving this process to, to come to the planning.
Um, do you think like for the next time we discuss this, we can come up with some specific ideas what they might wanna carry, so we know what we're talking about? Go ahead.
Keep in mind, we um do not write our ordinances specifically for one location. So, the discussion would have to be from the planning commission, whether you would like to see specific product or if you want, how, what language would you like us to present? Or would you like us to research and get some ideas of specific landscape material?
Great idea.
Well, Jody, who's, who's actual, who actually requested the comment and how was the request, was it requested to say we'd like to, to sell uh landscape items that are produced onsite? Or was it specifically said the stone, the millings, the screening, mulch, et cetera?
Um, I believe when the request went to our legal counsel, it was for the sale of rocks, milling, screenings and other landscape type material. And then after the planning department spoke with legal, we felt we needed better clarification to, of the wording, other landscape type material because it is interpreted differently from each individual person.
Okay, so it was specific to start with, but then it went into all other?
Yes, is what I was, that's the information that I received.
Landscaping can be very broad.
Very.
Very broad term. Um, so do you guys think we should, go ahead?
I'm just sorry, I just wanted the commission to keep in mind that this does require a special approval. Does require a public hearing through that special approval process, and so um, there can be things that could be added to a site plan. Should the desire to have other product um could be shown on the site plan as Mr. Steiner spoke on.
Okay. Joe, did you have something? Good, Joe, okay. Anybody else?
Well, the only, my only question is backing up to square one is that can we do this just for the landscaping business? And not have it applied to any other business?
No, it's just about the zoning, not the type of business, but the zoning.
Okay, yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
So, we can discuss this again and, you know, if there's any more specifics that we can add the next time, that'd be cool. All right, so on to public comment. Is there anybody in the lobby? Okay. Okay, information, I think, Jody, you said the next scheduled meeting's May twenty sixth?
Yes, we will be having a meeting on May twenty sixth. I have nothing further.
Okay. How's Karen doing?
Good.
Good. All right, um, commission staff comments, uh, Mr. Fritz?
No comment.
Mr. Anger? Any comments, Mr. Anger?
Nothing for me.
Okay, um, Mr. Steiner?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Helm?
I think I'm good, but thank you.
Mr. Gavarek?
Nope.
Okay, hey, Jody, I just wanna say thanks for putting together all the, the information today and for providing me this booklet. I should be done with this in uh like this time in twenty twenty five, I think. A little white reading before bedtime. Um, Jody, do you have anything to say?
Uh, thank you all, you have a good evening.
Katrina?
Have a good evening.
Thanks. George, anybody show up? All right, uh, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
All those in favor or uh against, same day, all right, um, everybody have a good night. Thanks for coming.
Have a good night.
Thank you, have a good evening.